I'll call this meeting to order. Rick, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you, Ann, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Mr. Reiner.
Thank you. Well, good evening. We will begin this evening with an update from the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau. With us this evening is Executive Director Scott Dring. Scott, do you have anybody from the Visitors Bureau with you? I'll let you introduce them.
I do. Josh Bricker on our staff is here as well. I was going to give you kind of a five-minute update. I will spare you and get right to the good stuff, if you don't mind. Almost, I think it was just over eighteen months ago, we began working collaboratively with council, city of Dublin staff, Dublin City Schools, and Nationwide Children's Hospital Sports Medicine Group to attract one of the largest football camps in the United States and North America. And we have a lot of folks in the audience. I'll let Doug introduce his team, but I would like to introduce Eddie and Lisa from the Nationwide Children's Hospital Sports Medicine who are here today. Thank you for doing that. They were a tremendous partner in helping us with this event. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Doug Berman, who flew in today from New Jersey just to come here and make a special announcement. So Doug.
Thank you, Scott, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we are, I'm Doug Berman, I'm the chairman of All American Games, and with me is Nate Seaman, who is our vice president for major events, and Matt DeRazo, who is our regional director for football university. And so I'm very pleased to announce that we are bringing our Top Gun Football University Camp to Dublin this July. It's July 18th to 20th, and then July 22nd to 24th. Just to give you a little bit of background on who we are, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, my partner Rich McGinnis came to me and said he wanted to put on a high school all-star football game, kind of like the McDonald's basketball game. And in December of 2000, the first All-American Bowl was played. It's now the U.S. Army All-American Bowl. It's played every January. It's televised on NBC television. A few out Ohio State standouts have played in this game, Beanie Wells and Teddy Kinn. I'm told that we have four U.S. Army All-Americans from Ohio this year, and five Ohio State commits, only one from Ohio. I don't quite get that, but two are going up to Michigan. You'll have to explain all of that to us when we get here. And then about six years ago, we wondered why some U.S. Army All-Americans did better against others, and realized that there were huge variations in their technique. These were athletes who had always excelled because they were bigger or faster or stronger. And so we said, what could we do to help that? And we started Football University. It is a technique-focused camp taught by NFL and current and ex-NFL coaches exclusively. It has expanded to thirty-five markets across the United States. We do camps in Canada. We do camps in Europe. And coming out of that, we realized that oftentimes the best kids in those camps could dominate the camp and would use their technique that they had been learning against their competition, but the moment you put them under pressure, they reverted back. And so we came up with this idea of, could we put the best kids that we saw every year against each other, all right, and give them an opportunity to try and practice that technique under pressure? We started, first year we had two hundred athletes come from across the country. That camp has now grown, that we've actually had to split it, so we will have eight hundred sixth to eighth graders, the best kids from across the country, and then the eight hundred ninth through eleventh graders come. In terms of what it has taken to put this together, because it's never easy to move an event like this, this is five thousand-plus hotel room nights, trying to figure out how you feed eight hundred families twice in terms of a community that can do it. I will say Nate on our staff and Josh, for all of you, has done a wonderful job marshaling and putting together all the resources that it will take. We're very excited to be here in Dublin. We appreciate the support of the Dublin City Schools, the Nationwide Children's Hospital for Sports Medicine, all the elements that have had to come together to bring what we hope is a great event. You all know you have a wonderful community. It's taken a while to figure out how to do this, and I hope you will all come by this July and see these great kids. And to kind of get it started, I did bring, and we will have more because we will divide them up, but Adidas is our title sponsor, so we have FBU shirts, but then we have special FBU Top Gun shirts. So we brought seven of them. And Mayor, we're going to let you figure out who gets what sizes. We don't quite have that. And even though it's a little early for the city, a official U.S. Army All-American Bowl of football.
That's great.
That down there?
No, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll come in handy.
Anyway, so once again, thank you to all. We're excited to be coming this July.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, if you would come back. I don't know whether any of my colleagues might have some questions for you. We do have a small interest in football in this community. Anybody have a question or comment?
I noticed you were also holding the regional camp here, too.
Yes. So we will be holding at, and I'm going to get it right because I've been practicing all day. Sayado High School, our Ohio Regional Camp, and Matt DeRazo is the regional director. We're very excited about that. We hope to have a lot of athletes from Dublin, but from all over Ohio. It's an invitation-only camp, so you can talk to Matt, but we want athletes who are serious about football. I mean, the way we say it, our coaches are passionate. To be an FBU faculty member, as we characterize it, my term, you have to be willing to show the kid how to do the technique. And if you aren't, then you're not part of what we want to teach you. So they want kids as passionate about learning how to play football better as they are about teaching it, so.
Is there going to be any involvement by Coach Urban Myers? Do you think he's going to stop by?
That is really up to his NCA compliance department.
He lives in this community.
We are, you know, it's a, we start, have always, from the very first All-American Bowl, said, we will do nothing to upset a kid's future, we only want to enhance it. The recruiting violations, when you come to the All-American Bowl, would not actually be on the athlete, they would be on the school. But we've always tried to keep in, you know, and even hand to that, we work very closely with the NCAA. And so any question like that, I'm sure he will get guidance from the Ohio State Compliance Department as to what to do.
Right.
Very good. Well, we look forward to it.
Yes.
We're not the least bit surprised that Scott and Josh, you know, have been great resources to you and to the Nationwide Children's people. You know, we certainly welcome that partnership. As most of the community knows, and I suspect you have learned, there's actually a facility, children's close to home, which is in Dublin. We're fortunate to have that. But again, as I said earlier, the interest and the passion for all sports, but, you know, certainly football in this community in central Ohio, I'm sure there'll be a lot of attention focused on what you're bringing to our community, and we really look forward to it.
Well, thank you very much, and everyone have a nice holiday.
Thank you. And this is the time where you can discreetly exit, if you like. We'll create a distraction. We'll have the cameras focused on the helmet. Thank you. Citizen comments regarding items not on this evening's agenda, Mr. Mauer. There you are.
Excuse my tottering. I had a hard fall last week. I know that you know and I know that we're looking for, and maybe have found, an artist who will do something relative to the pump, town pump. I'm not going to talk about that, but I am going to bring it into the picture. I want to throw you back in imagination to the time when the old pump was used, and some of the fathers of the town were up there at the old town pump, probably within spitting distance of it, and were playing chess and checkers and so on. Now, that's part of the picture. It's high noon, it's a typical Ohio steamy hot day, and there's a stranger coming through the crossroads there. And you can tell he's been walking for some time in the heat, and he heads for the pump, and he sees the guys playing checkers, and just to ask a rhetorical question, he asks whether he can have a drink at the pump. And of course, they joke with him and say, well, what have you done to earn a drink at the pump? But of course, it's all joking, and of course, he can get a drink at the pump. So he gets his drink at the pump and takes off, and probably leaving for the big town, Columbus. But there, the point I want to make is that, of course, you get a drink of water here at this pump. Now, the story gets murky and dark and whiny. You might remember a couple, I think maybe it was at the last council meeting, maybe two council meetings ago, the Nestle Company had a representative came in here and asked whether they could have some of your, could use some of the fiber optic wiring, and yes, so you granted it to them. Well, I need to tell you, I ran across a report on corporate activity, and it turns out that the Nestle Corporation is aggressively promoting the conversion of water, drinking water, to bottles. It is aggressively promoting bottled water for drinking. And you remember at some point, you know, it's my great achievement here to have you drinking city water. At one point, at some point, what that causes globally, locally and globally, is that the poor people are out. They can't afford, they'll now have to buy water, drinking water, on top of everything else. Now, poverty is not a big subject in this city, though we, as you know, there are points of poverty, and they're invisible. If you want to see real poverty, just go to your neighbor, Columbus, and I'll guide you through West Broad Street and South, and we'll see some poverty, which means starvation at the end of forty-eight hours. Well, anyway, they are promoting aggressively over the protests of countries around the globe, they're promoting the bottling of water, for drinking water. Now, I don't know what you would do. I am not going to run for council. I'm just a pipsqueak up here, and I'm not going to run for council to get a little more leverage, but I know what you're, I don't know what you're going to do. Could you call him back, or hers, not unlikely to be a her as a CEO, and say to them, no tiki and no washi, no getting out of bottled water corporations, or give me back my wiring? That is an issue, it's a very serious issue. I leave it to you. It's a tough one, I guess. Morally, it's an easy one. They have been entered, the Nestle Company's been entered into the Hall of Shame as a result of this activity, but there it is, and you might, if you want to, do a no tiki and no washi thing on them. So that's my, I don't know what you'd call it, Jeremiah, that's what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Moving on to our consent agenda, there are five items listed on our consent agenda this evening. I'd ask my colleagues if anyone wishes to remove any item or has a question about any item on the consent agenda this evening. Hearing none, I would move for the approval of the actions requested for the five items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ann, if you could call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our second readings, ordinance sixty-seven dash twelve.
Adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2013, and declaring an emergency.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, members of council. Hardly seems like it's been a month ago, but about a month ago, we held our two budget workshops pertaining to the 2013 operating budget. So this evening, we are asking for adoption of the 2013 operating budget. We included in your memo any adjustments that were made based out of discussions that were had during those two workshop meetings. In addition, there were a number of follow-up items that either we addressed in this memo or ensured council that in future council meetings, staff would be coming back with additional follow-up information. With that, I will entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody see anything they recognize, that they wanted to follow up on?
Angel, there's a couple things that it says that it will come back, the first quarter 2013, there was more than one. Is there a reason we can't get that sooner, like January instead of first quarter?
Sure. We worked with all of the departments that the particular topic pertained to, so we certainly can follow up with those divisions or departments and see if those are items that can be expedited. I know in some cases, it was obtaining information, whether it be from other entities, so we will reach back out to those departments and see if we can get that information at a sooner point in time, as opposed to just a generic, at some point in the first quarter.
Okay. I'd appreciate that, because sometimes we say first quarter, and there's some items that haven't been accomplished in first quarter, and we keep bringing them, it seems like, longer and longer, so.
Is there anything in particular that you're referring to, so that I make sure that that gets conveyed?
Well, the long, I am used to long-range planning with the historical markers. I, okay, I just, you know, some of that, I think, doesn't seem like, I know you all are busy, but I wonder if we could, you know, have more input before, like, February or March.
Yeah, we'll look at what type of update or staff report that we can provide, even letting you know the process that we're going through, and if that's something that we can provide an update in January.
Okay.
And just so that you know where we are in the process.
And that would, I notice legal services for the second quarter, which I can understand, but that would be helpful if we could get updates.
And the other thing we'll do, we'll add this to our project monitoring list, so that it is something that gets on the list and it doesn't go away.
Okay.
So, and we more closely track it.
Okay.
Anything else? Anyone? Okay. Mr. Mauer, if you'd like to come forward, please.
I have one question. It's about the President's Cup. Now, I know just about all about the President's Cup. I know that it pits American players against all players on the planet except Europeans. It's against all of them, and I know its procedures and so on, but I have one question. Here's the question. It's called the President's Cup. Now, who or what, is it one president, or is it many presidents? Who or what is the president or the presidents that are referred to in the President's Cup?
Anybody want to venture, venture a guess on that?
I don't know for sure, but we can make sure that Sandra gets with Mr. Mauer and provides him with that information.
I think also, by the way, and you often refer to me, or would if you knew the phrase, you call me a comma hound. I can also be an apostrophe hound. I think there's an apostrophe involved there in the President's Cup, and I don't know if it comes before the S or after the S.
You know, Mr. Mauer, I would have thought the same thing, but I was corrected. There is not.
There's not what?
There is not a comma.
No, no.
Or apostrophe, I'm sorry, there's not an apostrophe.
There is no apostrophe in that word?
There is not. I thought there should be as well.
Well, there should be.
Well, you know, when we have the GBA people in, we can.
I can't help it if the promoters of it are ignorant. There should be one there.
It's probably trademarked.
It'll show up, it'll show up in a law case sometime, if there's one, if it's
Yeah.
front or behind the S.
Mr. Mauer, it's our, it's our current president, the answer.
Our current president? The president, so.
Always the current president.
Well, you see, you better stick that in there, so the country knows that. You mean, you want to use your, your advertising for it?
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Was there anything else?
And, and there should be an apostrophe in there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ann, if you could call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Thank you. Born in sixty-nine days twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate purchase agreement with American Electric Power conveying certain property located in the city of Dublin, County of Franklin, state of Ohio, to be used by American Electric Power for the construction and operation of an electrical substation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. McDaniel.
Mayor, members of council, no change from what was presented last week, unless you have any other questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Mauer? You're up. AEP Electric Substation.
Oh, okay. There's something in here which doesn't make sense to my world, but I'm sure there's a, an explanation for it. I read in the, I read through the thing, and it said that this piece of property is going to be sold to AEP, or has been sold to AEP, for ten dollars. I mean, in my world, I'd say, look, I'll give you eleven dollars for that piece of property, and that's a generous offer, because I should make it ten dollars and one cent. But where does the ten dollars come from? My guess, well, I have some guesses.
Well, it comes from the city's budget.
Pardon?
Comes from the city's budget, first of all, but secondly, several reasons, Mr. Mauer. First of all, this is to entice an investment by American Electric Power to the tune of about nineteen million dollars to invest in transmission upgrade, new substation. By doing this, it will put a new substation out in the West Innovation District at Hootchard Road, which also is a job-ready site. So the city is working with AEP to have them build that substation at what we think would be a faster pace than what would usually be considered. This will also set the conditions for
Yeah.
additional circuitry out in that area.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is if you had ten dollars and fifty cents and nineteen million dollars to invest, I'd be happy, as the economic development director, to talk to you about that.
Well, I'd love to do that, you know. Okay. I wondered whether if the city had not been interested in having AEP come there, would they have come of their own accord?
Perhaps ultimately, but in their, more in their time. I think that certainly they are willing to lean forward on this investment as a result of getting access to the land. The other thing I would also offer is that when council previously approved this a couple of years ago, and this was a change to what was previously approved, they were looking for a substation site that would front State Route 161 in that general vicinity. We didn't think that was in the best interest of the, of the city, and city council certainly agreed with that, to have that frontage property used by a substation, so we agreed to bury it towards the back end of the Hootchard Road site.
Well, I'm disappointed. I thought I last had an opportunity there to make some cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Ann, if you could call for the vote, please.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Thank you. Ordinance seventy days twelve.
Authorizing appropriation of a 0.113 acres with 0.06 acres present road occupied, more or less, fee simple interest from the Yasmin Land Company Limited.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel.
There's no change to this as well, Mayor.
Questions? Thank you. Hearing none. Ann, if you could call for the vote, please.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance seventy-one dash twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to accept the dedication of a 0.136 acre, more or less fee simple interest from the Washington Township Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Ms. Watt, good evening.
Good evening. This is a generous donation from our colleagues over at Washington Township. Perhaps, you can see it in the visuals you have in your packet. It's a small, it's a small additional portion of right-of-way necessary off Fire Station 92 to add a northbound right turn hand lane on Riverside Drive.
Any questions?
Kind of one, and Sarah, I'm sorry that I did not drive by to verify this. How does this affect the multipurpose bike path that is, we're trying to establish there?
We'll, we have a section we'll need to remove, and we are requesting this right-of-way with them so that we can reconstruct it. The path has to move to the east, a portion of it needs to move further to the east to be able to accommodate the turn lane.
And will it affect the stone walls that are in place?
It should not, but we are not to that level of engineering for me to give you a firm answer.
So with the donation, we have room to relocate the bike path, multipurpose?
Right, right. The intent is to ensure the shared-use path stays
Okay.
at the location. We will not eliminate the shared-use path. We may have to reconstruct it, but there will still be a connection there.
Okay, thank you.
The stone wall would always be put back together. Yeah, no matter.
Yes.
Yes.
As long as we have that understanding that it will be put back together.
And you know, I didn't think to ask this previously, and I understand you to say maybe we're not to that level of engineering, but I was wondering about stacking. You know, how much stacking are we going to allow for, or do we know?
I'm hearing two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet of stacking available in the lane.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, Ann, if you could call for the vote, please.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to that portion of our agenda, dealing with the introduction of first, the first reading of ordinances, and beginning with ordinance seventy-two days twelve.
Amending annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. Muma.
Thank you. We are requesting our final amendment for the 2012 appropriations. We continually monitor all of our expenditure accounts to make sure that there are no accounts that are negative. In many cases, we can just transfer money within a department to cover any shortages, but throughout the year, as projects get underway and funding is allocated towards projects, on occasion, we do have accounts that do go in the hole. So on those occasions, when there isn't sufficient funds to transfer internally within a department, if you will, we come forward for a supplemental appropriation, and this is the final supplemental appropriation for the year. We are requesting that this be approved this evening so that it can be put in place by
Any questions?
One question. Perhaps I missed it, but, oh, yeah, never mind. I see it. Sorry.
This is basically housekeeping, really.
It is, yes.
Yep.
I think we've brought forward three other supplemental appropriations, three or four throughout the year.
Everybody good? Okay. Is there a motion to dispense with the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ann, if you could call for the vote on the motion.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you.[1753.58] Thank you. And on the ordinance?
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance seventy-three days twelve.
Establishing appropriations based on the two thousand and thirteen operating budget of the city of Dublin, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Introduction, please. Thank you. Move whenever you're ready.
Yes. A few moments ago, you passed ordinance number sixty-seven dash twelve, which approved the two thousand and thirteen operating budget. This ordinance actually appropriates the dollars into the proper accounts pursuant to the ordinance that you just previously passed. Again, we are requesting that council dispense with the public hearing and approve this ordinance this evening.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make that motion to dispense with the public hearing?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for a vote on the motion?
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Thank you. And on the ordinance?
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance seventy-five days twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement with Toller Henderson LLC and Invictus Land Holding LLC and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel, whenever you're ready.
If I get the screen to come on here. Technically, I'm sorry about that. I didn't touch that button. Sorry about that. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get going here and we'll see if this, this comes up. I apologize for that. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Ordinance seventy-five twelve, if approved by emergency, would authorize the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement with the sellers mentioned in the title. In summary, the purchase would consist of land improvements found on the site along the Sciota River and Riverside Drive, generally in the vicinity of the Digger and Finch Restaurant. The area is depicted in your staff report and here on the screen. Perfect timing. So just, just to orient you, this is the, the Sciota River here. This is north to the left, I two seventy. This is what we've, right in here is the Digger and Finch Restaurant, the driving range. You're probably familiar with, well, Toller Road, Toller Ridge Road, and then the recent Vrabel Skilled Nursing Facility, which is proposed to, to go here. Oh, I thought it was on the screen. There it is. I was on the wrong screen. Okay, sorry about that. So here's two seventy. Here's the river. Riverside Drive. Dale Drive. Toller Ridge Drive. Toller, Toller Road. Here's the Digger and Finch Restaurant. This is generally the, the driving range that's currently there, and then this is the proposed Vrabel Skilled Nurse, Nursing Facility, which was recently, a preliminary development plan was, was approved on. So the purchase of these properties, which I'll review in just a moment, intended to secure green space along the Sciota Riverfront in order to provide the community the option to develop a park and/or allow the, the potential relocation of Riverside Drive. Council's action to secure this property would be consistent with the vision for the Bridge Street corridor. The land acquisition proposed consists of twelve point three zero plus or minus acres, as depicted on the graphic on the wall and the exhibit in the staff report and real estate purchase agreement. This land acquisition consists specifically of O S one here, two, three, four. Also, it consists of right-of-way, three, four, and also the Digger and Finch location, which is called out separately here with one point two seven acres. We referenced the right-of-way two as well as a, as part of the purchase as realigned Riverside Drive. But we, we mentioned that here because that was what we used to take a look at what might be the easternmost realignment should council in the future decide to do that. So we wanted to garner that additional right-of-way if necessary. The purchase of the land itself is two point, two million three hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. The land price per acre is about seven percent above the appraised value of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars per acre. And this property will be paid for from the Parkland Acquisition Fund. The, the, the right-of-ways noted in here is R W one through ten. Certain right-of-ways are to be dedicated by developers at this time, which include right-of-way four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Those are generally associated with future development. Here's four. Right-of-way five. Right-of-way six. Six, seven. Ten. Here's nine. So those right-of-ways are to be dedicated in the future. Staff anticipates keeping council fully advised of these right-of-way dedications as they move forward. The one thing that I do want to mention about these right-of-way dedications is that the topography on this site is very difficult. As you know, there's about a thirty-five to forty-foot drop from existing Toller Ridge Drive to the existing Riverside Drive. So the, the right-of-way dedications relative to the interior of the future development in this area here would be up for discussion as part of any future proposed development. Right-of-way nine is to be dedicated as part of this agreement. Right-of-way six, which is over here, which is the north-south road associated with the skilled Vrabel nursing facility, was included as part of the preliminary development plan. Will be discussed as part of the final development plan when it comes forward. But also caution that that right-of-way as well is under discussion relative to the final engineering design, site design of the skilled nursing facility. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of difficulties relative to these right-of-ways and maybe in flux as the designs go forward and get into great detail. So Digger and Finch Restaurant, which you're all probably familiar with. This acquisition also includes the proposed purchase of the restaurant itself with a, with associated land totaling about one point two seven acres. The purchase price of the restaurant is one million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is ten percent above the city's appraised value of one million, one hundred thousand dollars. And this portion of the property will be paid for from the capital improvement tax fund. The disposition of this property will be determined by council at a later date as it contemplates short-term and long-term uses and timing of these uses relative to the development of the site and associated adjacent sites. So the total purchase price would be three million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Now, the sellers are also agreeable to sell to the city O S five and O S six. These are these green open spaces both here and here. We did have agreement for that purchase in, in theory and concept, but the purchase is intended to be delayed at this time as plans come for, forward for the adjoining development to the south, which is this area here. The reason for that is that we are just not sure where the, where a potential entrance road off of this connector may need to occur. So we are committed to the owner to come back and buy that at a later date. Or if the develop, development proposed to the south wants to develop closer to the roadway, they in fact could buy it as well. But at a minimum, we would desire to bring that back to council at a later date and secure that greenway going from the river further to the east. So the emergency nature of this ordinance is in fact due to the ongoing safety issues that are under consideration as a part of any change to Riverside Drive, associated intersections that currently exist or may exist in the future. Also, the sellers are agreeable to this real estate purchase agreement at the agreed-upon price, but must also close by the end of the year. We also have, have, as I've mentioned, several pending opportunities for development for economic development purposes. Therefore, staff is requesting ordinance seventy-five twelve be passed as an emergency. The seller will, will reserve the right to cancel the contract if it does not close by the end of the year. And staff continues to develop conceptual plans and ideas along with its consultants and with potential developers, and will bring those forward to council regarding the future park, potential relocation of Riverside Drive, and other development within the corridor. So staff recommends council pass ordinance seventy-five twelve as an emergency, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. I also just want to, very quick, recognize Mr. Vrabel's in the audience, and I just want to thank him for the cooperation and working on this. And it's been about a two-year discussion, and would like to move forward with this purchase. Council agrees.
Thank you. Mr. Vrabel, do you have any wish to speak? You've signed up to speak. You don't have to. And Mr. Muckell? All right, very good. Do any council members have any comments, questions? Staff, anyone?
Yeah, I'd just, just like to add that after years of visioning and consultants and council discussion, that this is really the first visible piece that we can see a tangible result of. I'm really excited about it. I think it's just an excellent opportunity and looking forward to this being the very beginning and moving on with our whole process. So thank you, Dana, for your work on this. And, Mr. Vrabel, we appreciate your cooperation on this as well.
Typically, I don't care to deal with this on an emergency basis. However, I think one of the problems is we only have one meeting in December. But in this case, I will echo what Mike said, that it's extremely important to create and get a hold of our vision. This is something we've been talking about for years, and it's very important that we follow through on that. So I will break my thoughts out of rules tonight because it's extremely important that we go ahead and get this done.
Appreciate it. Would somebody then like to make a motion to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for a vote on the motion?
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes. And on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vrabel. Thank you, Dana, staff, everyone involved in this. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. All righty. We've gone to ordinance seventy-six dash twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documentation to acquire one point eight four five acres, more or less, in fee simple for right-of-way and point three nine five acres, more or less, in easement for general utilities from John W. McKittrick and declaring an emergency.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council again. This acquisition is relative to the construction of Emerald Parkway Phase Eight. You've had many of these before you as we continue to secure the right-of-way for that important roadway. The city will be acquiring right-of-way and a utility easement from Mr. McKittrick. The map, the map attached to your staff report laid that out for you. The appraised value of this property that the city obtained was one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. We're agreeing to a purchase price of two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which is six point four percent above that appraised value. Also, we are requesting this to be passed as an emergency for similar reasons to the previous one. One, obviously relating to the construction of this roadway and the overall safety of our street system. And then, secondly, to try to close this by the end of the year. Happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
How many more pieces do we have to buy?
Yes. In fact, next month, we'll be bringing another one before you related to, which is owned also by Mr. McKittrick. That will be in the form of a land swap. And I'll explain that when we bring that forward, but that has to do with other acreage that the city bought along the Emerald Eight acquisition. So we'll be able to swap some land for that. And then we have one other piece relative to that on the far west end of the project right along Riverside Drive. And we're in negotiations with that party at this time.
So I hear you saying two more.
Two more total, right.
Excellent, okay.
Dana, when is the, are there plans to begin the roadway?
I'll refer that to the city manager, but I think our, our direction at this point is to get underway next year. Earlier is better, I think I heard her say.
Yeah, we, we've had discussions. One of the things we're coordinating right now is the relocation of utilities up along Bright Road. And we anticipate working with the utility companies and hopeful to do that in the first quarter of next year. And then we would, would go out to bid and plan on being under construction sometime mid to fall of next year.
Wow, excellent.
So we're pretty excited. This has been one of those projects we've talked about for many, many years and the process of going through and working closely with the property owners and acquiring the properties. Dana's spent a lot of time working with the individual property owners has, has worked very well. So we're, we're very much looking forward to completing this and initiating the construction on the final piece of Emerald Parkway.
Marcia, refresh my memory. Is there any pending office buildings going into this parcel yet?
Not currently.
Okay. Great. If somebody would move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as emergency?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for a vote on the motion, please?
Mrs. Boring? Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker? Mr. Gerber? Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ian, on the ordinance, please.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. This wraps up the second ordinance and first reading of ordinances. So, we will move on to the other portion of our agenda. And on that portion of our agenda is a tree replacement fee waiver request, master maintenance. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. As council is aware, this request for a waiver of our tree replacement was filed some time ago by Mr. Klein on behalf of the master maintenance located 6,200 Wilcox Road. Mr. Klein is present today. Following the filing of that, this has been delayed for a while. And I'm happy to report to you that all the work on the property has been done. The site has been cleaned up. The south side of the building has been finished off. The issue with AEP has been resolved, and the connections have all been made. And the poles and the guardrail that were out there have also been removed. Based upon that, we have had discussions with Mr. Klein and have agreed, if council is so willing to do that, that they would, that his client would pay 50 percent of the, ask for 50 percent waiver rather than the entire waiver. And we would be done with this. Thank you very much. Mr. Klein, I'd ask you to come to, I want to be sure I stated this correctly, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Chris Klein from the Blaugrind Law Firm. Mr. Smith's statement is correct. And the only thing I'd add is that as of last week, this project was at about $98,376. So, this conversion has cost the Hook family quite a bit. And we would be grateful for this dispensation if you'd be willing to give it to us.
Great, thank you. Council members have any questions? Hearing none, then, I would move that council approve a 50 percent waiver of the $8,000 tree replacement fee based on the staff recommendation and the fact that master maintenance over the past thirty days has completed the work on the site on the south side of the building, dealt with the AEP issue, and caused the remainder of the site to be cleaned up. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, and if you call for a vote, please?
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Staff, comments?
A couple items. In your packet, there was a letter from Peg Alexis from the Riverside Woods Home Owners Association. And we've continued to work with the homeowners association and the residents with regard to making some adjustments in the traffic circles that are at a couple of their cul-de-sacs. And we are continuing to look at options. And we had relayed information to the representatives of the homeowners association that if we were able to complete this project this year, it would be late in the year. And based upon discussions that we had in the last few days, we're continuing to evaluate options. And we'll be following up with the homeowners association. And our hope is come to an agreement sometime early next year. And we'll be able to resolve this issue and then proceed with the construction that we'll do sometime early next spring or summer, once we award the 2013 street maintenance program.
Thank you.
The other item, I know last week, we had our reception for the recognition of Dave Harding's retirement that's upcoming. And so, I would just like, again, to take this opportunity to thank Dave for all of his efforts over the many years. And to state that we sincerely appreciate all of his efforts and hard work. And he's been one of those employees that helped set the foundation for this city. And is very much appreciated and will be very much missed.
Dave, I really feel like you need to come to the podium.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I mean, it's your last meeting.
Unless he wants to come back.
Or that.
Well, as I tried to indicate at my reception, I feel so, so fortunate to have worked for such a great city these past twenty-six and a half years. There is no other organization I would have rather spent my career in, in public service. And I consider it an honor and a privilege to have served not only this organization, but this community for that period of time. So, you know, as we get closer to Friday, I'm sure I'm going to be a little emotional because I love this organization. And so, I just am so thankful that I had the opportunity to build so many relationships with council members and staff throughout those years. And thank you once again for the recognition.
Well, thank you, Dave. And as I think somebody mentioned at the celebration that we had, was it last, last week? Thank you. Lost track of time. But anyway, the legacy that you leave, this community and this organization, you know, and the many policies, very significant policies that you helped to develop, you know, as well as the many hires, you know, the wise decisions you made in that regard, you know, not the least of which was the support that you provided city council in their selection of city managers and so forth. You know, always a, you know, very steady, you know, support in what is a very difficult decision-making process. I know I, you know, appreciated your advice and counsel, and I think the rest of council did as well. So, thank you very much.
And Dave, I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that you sort of set an example for us in the healthy by choice Dublin. And, you know, it showed a lot of self-discipline and courage to do that. And you're really a role model for all of us. So, really appreciate and I hope you're around to advise people on that particular aspect of your life.
I'd be more than happy to share my experience and my story with anyone who has an interest because it was a life-changing experience. As I told you, John, I was type-two diabetic, and I've been able to reverse that with the change in diet. And so, I'm probably healthier now than I've probably been in a long time. So, yeah, I'd be more than willing to share my experiences with anybody. Thank you for noticing.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Dave?
It's a great way to launch your retirement in totally good health.
Dave, I also would like to mention, and we talked about your setting policy and helping to set policy. And I think the human resources area has, like the tax code, things that were years ago, for instance, harassment used to be not even thought about. And you've helped the city maintain on these current issues and provide training through that. So, that's got to be a feather in your hat. And I know all the things you've been through have not been easy. I know there's been difficult choices. But I got it when you were retiring. Some of you have been here for a long time, and the city was nothing. And you are leaving a family. You raised your kids together. You've been together. And it's sort of like saying goodbye to a kid where you're leaving retirement, you're leaving this part behind. So, I understand that now. I wish you the best. And we are going to miss you in this effort. So, good luck to the next person who's going to try to fill your shoes.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks a lot, David.
Thank you so much.
I would like to relate one more thing. At the end of the program, we were talking, and Dave, I was listening, of course, and Dave was saying to somebody, they were asking them what he did before he came to Dublin. And he said he had been working five years. And he said, "You know, if I had any idea what was going to happen, I think I would have been scared." So, I thought that was kind of a interesting comment.
Yeah, just the growth of the organization. We've come so, so far in twenty-six years. And literally, when council hired Tim Hansley as a city manager, and he came to me and said, "David, strap yourself in because we're going to be dealing with a lot of growth. We got to hire a bunch of people. So, get busy and start working." And the growth was gradual enough that it was manageable. But I think had I known then what I know now, I probably would have been scared to death about just how big we would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia?
The other item, I'm not sure how council wants to address this. The, there was a memo that was in your packet with regard to 2013 compensation for non-bargaining unit employees. A staff report that was prepared and a recommendation made with regard to implementing the pay adjustments that are given to non-bargaining unit employees typically on March 1st to accelerate that to January 1st. So, I don't know if it's council's preference to handle that at this point or at some later point in time. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And if you call for a vote?
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
You know, if council doesn't mind, while we're still in the staff note portion, you know, since you commented on a couple of things that are in our packet, there were a couple of things. One was the proposed Avery Road rezoning that is in the city of Columbus. And I think there's a draft letter in there. And I don't want to presume, you know, what council wants to do. I think it would be obvious. But anyway, I just wanted to open that up for discussion. I would suggest we send a letter.
Yes. Well, we've sent, we've sent a-
I thought it was a draft.
We've sent a staff letter previously, but this was a letter that would be coming from city council. Right. Yes. I appreciate that. It was my suggestion that we have a council, the council communication. Okay, we will get that out for your signatures.
Okay. And the other thing on here was Columbus 2020 Global Economic Development Engagement with Japan. You know, Dana, I think there was a recounting of his trip and so forth that he's told us about before. But I think staff was asking whether council was supportive of continuing that effort. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Anybody want to comment?
I'm, maybe I missed it, but it's, the total cost was in our operating budget, right?
Yeah, we have funds programmed in 2013.
So, that's a green light? Okay, very good. Thank you. Mary Lee, you want to, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
Marcia? That was it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mary Lee?
Thank you. On November 26th, Rick and myself, Mike was out of town, met with Fay Gibson and staff, along with people that had applied for bed tax. So, I'm going to move that, the recommendation of the finance committee regarding the applications, be approved, and with a couple changes on it. The Dublin Arts Council's Community Research Project has requested withdrawal at this time. And they will come back if necessary after the first of the year. Also, you may recall that we had approved, as part of the negotiation, well, application really, for to get this 2013 football university Top Gun, we had to commit for Scott $25,000. And so, we did. And so, now, we're going to use it because he was successful in that, as we heard earlier tonight. And then, I will go through the individuals quickly. The Arthritis Foundation, also just to remind council members, last year, the finance committee, after going through the exercise of the bed tax applications, felt that there were certain applications that were routine, that these are activities that come on a regular basis. And that we wanted to empower the staff to go ahead and process those and make a recommendation to the committee. And not to require them to come forward that evening. So, you will see in your list where it says administratively reviewed, that was what happened, but then brought forth to the finance committee, and we're bringing it for your approval tonight. The Club Ohio Soccer Nike Challenge Cup, again at 5,000. This is a great new program from the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, this Irish Experience Grant Program. They are putting in $7,500 from their operating budget and requesting us to match that. This is a result of, you may recall that they did contract with a research firm to really look at visitors who had come through and had participated in their package kind of promotional activities over the last few years. And one of the things that came out of that was that people really enjoyed coming here, but they found that there was a limit of how much Irish was really in the town. They expected to have more music and dance and festivities or whatever. And so, that is what this program will be. It's a grant program that they'll operate. And both the restaurants and merchants down in the area will have an opportunity to request funding through them to support additional activities. So, I think that it's another innovative idea that the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau came up with to continue to encourage visitors to our town and fill the beds in our hotels. The Dublin Jerome High School is the only high school that has a homecoming parade. And we have, for the last three years, participated in the city service component to that. The Dublin Kiwanis Frog Jump, we're all familiar with. And the Dublin Sciota High School Lacrosse Boosters Tournament has been here for several years. And again, we pay for city services. Same is true of the Dublin Soccer League Charity Cup for $16,832. The Dublin Youth Athletics, the Wayne Williams Memorial Tournament, will also pay for the city services, not to exceed $19,500. The Kiwanis Club of Greater Dublin, please note that we did tell them this would be the final year that we would be providing funding for this project. It has attracted about 190 students, but many are not from Dublin. So, we felt that they needed to seek support from Kiwanis Clubs of the communities also where the young people are from, as well as perhaps the municipal governments in those areas. And this is paying for actually overtime of our police staff. So, they, somewhat reimbursing ourselves on that. The Ohio Premier Girls Soccer Club is for the OP Invitational that we're familiar with. And the HDBA, this is a new engagement campaign that they have. No, this is one they've always done. It's for $20,000 that we're used to doing, which has really paid off. And then, we are requesting not to approve the National Intercollegiate Flying Association called SafeCon. They have come to us, I think this is their third or fourth year. And we weren't aware of this, but actually, we learned that evening from Ms. Gibson, that they actually have never accessed the grant money because they haven't followed the rules. And so, if you don't comply with sending in the reports following the events within a timeframe as designated in your approval letter, then you are not eligible to receive the funds for reimbursement. And so, we decided that we needed to, perhaps, as you know, this is not in Dublin per se, but does use the Dublin hotels. Then, we already talked about the $25,000 for the Top Gun and postponing the Dublin Arts Council. This motion also includes that we wanted to make a, make it very clear. So, this is a policy change that, right now, the letter they received says thirty days following the event. But sometimes, that is difficult for event people to get everything in and get it. So, we wanted to extend it within sixty days. They needed to, following the completion of the event, submit all the reports required to the Director of Taxation. And failing to meet this would exclude them the following year from receiving money. And and then, we added another policy as we had such great success this year with the one we put in effect, that based on this policy above, that they would not have to, you know, that administratively, the tax department could say to the applicant, "You are denied because you didn't follow the rules the year before." So, that wouldn't have to come to us to disapprove. They could administratively disapprove that. So, if I could have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
And if you call for a vote?
Can I?
If there's, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion?
I appreciate the effort that you've gone through this and established those rules. One of the things I noticed, though, in your minutes was that you also wanted to be sure that the correct person is getting notice. So, if it's a youth campaign and there's a youth leader that the person dealing with the money give notice to. And I appreciate your thoughts on that, so that maybe this will not be overlooked, that we contact the people who are there on a permanent basis. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Very nice. And if you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary Lee, since you have the floor, do you want to continue with roundtable?
Just two other things. We, I have completed our search for a MORPC Executive Director and have made a recommendation to the A Committee, that board that Marcia's on. And so, by the end of this week, we have a MORPC Board meeting on Thursday. There'll be a public announcement regarding a new director that will start a little out of part of January there. Also, Kathy and I attended the National League of Cities meeting. And I thought one of the most interesting things that I went on was, the mobile tours are always very interesting and at conferences. And this one was the Green Tour to see three different, actually, we went by five different, but we physically went in three, very different kind of buildings that have been built. And one was actually not new, but it's an arts, an art after-school program for young people. That one was about fifteen years old. And it's very interesting, the wonderful creative ideas that they have done to create lead buildings. And the one that I thought was, well, it just tells a lot about Boston because they have incredible amount of building going on there and building that has gone on. There seems to not have been any recession that one can notice, at least. And one of the most fabulous buildings we went in, which had wonderful roofs that were planted and, you know, bamboo and everything. And it was really incredible. This was a private development that invested $600 million building this building with no guarantee that anybody was going to move into the building. It is 100 percent filled. And so, you can see that in some cities, there are investment people who are willing to make these investments and hope that people, you build it and they will come. And it has proven to be, you know, profitable for them. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
The only thing I'd like to bring up, and I think Rick Gerber has a proposal for this, is the acknowledgement of Captain Nicholas Rozansky naming the soccer fields after him at Dairy Park. And I'd like to defer to Rick, because I think he's got a, some words on this.
Yeah, I do have some, I guess.
How about when we get to Rick? Okay. Did you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I also, as Mayor Lee said, attended the state. And Boston was quite active. I went on neighborhoods where they were reviving their different neighborhoods and on a tour. The one thing that I did find interesting was all this activities. I finally had to ask the guy, "Where are you getting your funding for this?" And he said, "Well, we get a lot of money from the hotel bed, hotel bed tax, that we have one of the highest rates they are." And he looked at all of us and said, "Thank you." So, that was an interesting thing when you look at Boston. I also wanted to mention that Mayor Lee was elected to the Board of the Women and Municipal Government- Government, which congratulations to you, Mary Lee, for taking those efforts. I looked at a couple things, wondered if, Marcia, when we look, review our law department and expenses, do we ever look at different healthcare service providers to see if, you know, we can get a, whatever you get, a reasonable rate on metals?
Yeah, and I'm not sure what our current term is, but that is something that periodically you look at, going out for an RFP and reviewing the different options that you have, and I don't know, off the top of my head, the timeframe that we're currently under, under our contract, but it is something that we're aware of.
Okay. I hope so. Also, I talked to somebody from Waste Zero who presented a seminar because of Mike's suggestion of how we can encourage more recycling. And Mike, you mentioned, you know, like the stickers on the trash cans, and they mentioned that that really was kind of hard because of how people had different trash cans and loaded them up, and they have a bag situation that they do instead where you buy this bag. Talked to him for a while and asked him how it was doing, and also mentioned how we do this service, provide this service for residents, so how would you deal with that kind of situation if we didn't want to start charging? And he had a lot of suggestions. So I hope that when we're starting to look at that request about how to encourage more recycling, that we look out and we look at different programs that are offered, and how we can modify our program in that area. Very similar to the tags that you were talking about, Mike. I feel like I'm going, anyway. Town Pump Project in the Rec Center is really progressing. He now has photos documenting his steps that he's taken, to photos of children around the town pump. He's got his schedule up on when he's going to be there, and he talks to anyone. If you go in and talk to him, he'll show you exactly what he's doing. I think this is one of the greatest things that we've done with the public art, to have that there, and he's got the model out display, and as I said, the documentation with photos. So I hope everyone can stop by there and experience that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Rick?
Yeah, I guess two things. One, I want to thank staff and Paul for completing or reopening Dublin Road South. It's great, and actually, it's a very nice job. A lot of residents have said thank you, and it looks very good, so I know we're doing it in stages, and everybody's looking forward to the next phase, hopefully this coming spring or summer. The second is, as you are aware, City Council formed the KIA Task Force comprised of John, Mike, and myself, to explore ways in which the city may start the process of better recognizing its fallen heroes. And through that process, you know, we've, I think we've made a noble yet modest gesture of saying thank you for protecting, to the veterans, for protecting our freedom and recognizing the ultimate personal sacrifice that each of them has made. As you are all aware, the City Council adopted our recommendation to construct a wall over at the cemetery in honor of the KIA's, and I think everybody in town is very appreciative of that. However, the Task Force believes there's a little bit more to do. We've had two distasteful wars here in the last 10 years, and we've had unfortunately two residents in the city who have passed away. The first of which was Wesley Davids, who passed away a few years ago in Iraq, and in his honor, the Veterans Legion Post was named after him. Recently, this spring, Captain Nick Rozansky perished in Afghanistan while serving his country, and we believe that his honor ought to be recognized more than just the wall over there at the cemetery. And as such, I'm prepared to make a brief motion, if I may, Mr. Mayor. And that motion is that, as the Chair, on behalf of the Task Force, I'll make the following motion. That as a longstanding resident of Dublin and who has, and who had an affinity for the game of soccer here in Dublin, and while serving his country and who made the ultimate sacrifice in so doing, that Captain Nick Rozansky memory be honored by dedicating the soccer fields at every field in his name and by erecting two signs at each end of the fields, using materials and landscaping consistent and compatible with the surrounding area and subject to staff approval.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
This is obviously a very emotional situation and painful, and I tried to write my thoughts down because it is so emotional. I want to let people know that I've spent a day at the Naval Academy and left with a tremendous, this is when kids were being sworn in, and I left with a tremendous amount of respect for the men and women who chose to serve our country. Wanted to remind people, we are erecting a beautiful monument to be recognized by Dublin citizens who are killed in action, so I want you all to please understand that my comments are in no way to be reflective of a disrespectful of the situation, but more to respect the citizens who have given to their community and have passed on in other tragic events. This puts council in an extremely difficult position because death is always painful, it's always emotional, and I cannot figure out how we address those citizens who have approached us and will approach us for special recognition. How do we approach the passing of our first female major, mayor, who spent her lifetime helping to shape the city? We've had an enormous amount of people in the past that came to us for a death of a pediatrician who devoted his life to healing and saving children, as well as donating to the school, volunteering as a team physician. Lately, more recently, a neighborhood was greatly impacted by the tragic death of a young boy, and those people came to us and wanted the playground dedicated to him. Also, we had Wesley Davids, who the Veterans Post named a thing, their post after him, that was not city. And frankly, I am unable to quantify the circumstances and the contributions that people have made to the city. And how do we designate the type of area to be dedicated? I know I am in no position to make any type of judgment call on all the various issues that could arise from what we're doing at this. I heard someone tell me, "Well, we can do case by case." I can't do case by case when someone comes and is deeply affected. We currently have a tree legacy program in remembrance, and certainly, that tree with the commemorative plaque could be planted in the area reflecting the person to be remembered. And I thought about that, and I thought, wow, a tree is a living thing, and it's sort of like the giving tree. I was thinking like, why wouldn't you want a tree in a soccer field dedicated? Because the tree, just like the giving tree will grow, people will go to the tree and receive shade and then reflect on why it's there. So for me, as I mentioned, this is not a matter of disrespect, please don't think it's that way, we have a program in place. We also are doing a tremendous amount of recognition of our veterans, our missing actions, our killing in action, because we do have a tree legacy policy, but more, this is more of a matter of respect for all who have contributed to the community and have passed by tragic circumstances, and I cannot separate the two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
No, I just want to say that, you know, those people who serve our country and get up in the morning and go to, and risk their lives intentionally, I believe, and we've lost two fine young men, deserve a special recognition. I think naming a soccer field is a minimalist thing to do, someplace where this young man spent a lot of time with fellow Dublin youth, and I just think, and I believe, I think that people who serve in the military and go into harms risk for the country deserve special recognition, and they do so voluntarily. So I would like to see this amendment, this motion pass. Thank you.
Just clarifying, because he's saying something different than I thought I heard your motion to be, which, if I'm correct, you said your motion was to dedicate with two plaques, et cetera, at the Avery Road, not, it's not naming, it's dedicating. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes.
Okay.
I'd just add that I concur with John. I think there's a major distinct difference between one who gives their life for their country and its service. And we have many tragic occurrences in this city every year, and I know even for myself personally, we were impacted in my neighborhood by a young lady who lost her life in a fire. So those are very hard decisions, although I also respect everybody's right to their own personal opinion. It is clear to me that everybody is very passionate about this, no matter, no matter your vote, and I think everybody's voting in their heart for the right reasons, so.
Anyone else? I agree. I thank everybody for their, you know, heartfelt, you know, expressions of sentiment and so forth. So Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mrs. Voring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Rick? Mike?
Just to follow up to Kathy's piece on the public art, are we communicating with respect to this artist and the time they're at the center? Because it's really a great opportunity. I know the schools, I think, are involved in this in some way, shape, or form, but...
Yes.
Yes, is the short answer.
So the short answer is that every Tuesday from 2:00 to 6:00, the artist will be there. The other days of the week are a bit more flexible based upon what's happening in the building and the artist's availability. There'll be a short break around the Christmas holiday, but we're keeping that information available online and are continuing to work with the Arts Council and with the Historical Society. Actually, tomorrow, we're working on what the educational display is going to be in that temporary space, so we're going to keep it moving. Good news is there's lots of time, there's some programming that we're going to offer at the facility, and right now, we're still kind of filling out how it works in the facility.
So he's actually doing the, kind of the work there, the sculpting, or the...
Yes, he's working on his maquette right now to finalize some poses, and our public art conservationists will be in to review that, to make sure we are structurally in the right place, and then after that, he'll start doing life size.
And then it goes to the process to be...
Right, after the, it's a very interesting process. The educational materials will go through it, if you want to learn more about how bronze is made, or certainly go talk with them, he'd be happy to hear from you.
No, but it's sent offsite to have that work done?
Yes, yes. The foundry is in Cleveland. We're really fortunate, this is an all-Ohio project from beginning to end.
We need to emphasize that when we publicize.
We are. We're actually publicizing nationally.
Terrific.
I think it's been there more hours than that, because I'm never in there after 2:00.
Those are his regular...
Those are, I made him commit to every week, a definite time period, he'd be there, and the rest of the week is flexible.
Well, Sarah, I also want to thank you for seeing that it is introduced to everyone. I know the seniors are going to have him present, have a presentation that they're looking forward to, but, in fact, he has a great model already of the pump and the children there, and to listen to him talk about, well, I'm not sure if he had, I hope I don't, that I misquote him, but, you know, the nuzzle in the boy's arm, or the way the head is, or whatever, it's very fascinating, the details he's going to this level. So thank you, Sarah.
That's all I have, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy?
I really don't have anything, everybody have a holiday, Merry Christmas, have a good day. We'll be together again and so forth.
Thank you. Well, here we are again, at the end of another year, it's just hard to believe. And, you know, all that we've accomplished in 2012, you know, I can, I can name some things, and I will, you know, the risk in doing so is that you leave things out, and certainly, if I was to name them all, you know, we'd be here, you know, for several more minutes, but, you know, some of the accomplishments, as I thought about this, that stood out in my mind, was our police department solving of the homicide that took place at the gas station on Bridge Street. I think that was a, certainly, an unfortunate tragedy, but the, you know, first-class work of our police department in solving that in the amount of time that they did, you know, is certainly something to be recognized. Hopefully, we don't have to do it again. Then I also think of the International Festival and Events Award in recognition of the Dublin Irish Festival, but certainly all the other events that we offer, including the Fourth of July and the different parades and so forth. Some of our other accomplishments, the Ohio University Medical School, you know, we've got something going in on the, on the land that we have used as an enticement for, it seems like, a lot of things in recent years, and so we're very excited about that. Of course, obviously, the announcement of the President's Cup, which will be coming here next fall, that's certainly very exciting and will shine the spotlight on our community and give us an opportunity to, you know, show the world what a great community that we are. The Bridge Street District, all the work in this past year that went into that, and it feels to me, you know, that that's really ready to pop in 2013. I'm looking forward to that. Of course, we saw, you know, excuse me, one example of that this evening in the purchase of the property along the riverfront, and, you know, what that might lead to. So all of these things and all those things that I mentioned, you know, I know that I've said this before, but, you know, it seems like we really never take a moment to reflect on the many great things that we do. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't celebrate enough, in my opinion. We don't celebrate ourselves, you know, in what we've accomplished. So, you know, this is, this is my humble way of saying thank you to staff. I was, I was reminded at Dave Harding's reception, you know, of, you know, not just in Dave's case, but certainly Dave is a prime example, you know, of all the nights and weekends, this evening being an example that staff sacrifices, you know, in the course of doing your work, you know, that does not go unnoticed, you know, we don't take that for granted, you know, certainly appreciate it. You know, when you count up all the dinners that you've missed, and, you know, maybe it's your, well, this is the age of the DVR, so I guess you can record your favorite television program these days. But in any event, you know, it is, you do make a sacrifice, and that's much appreciated. And along those same lines, you know, I'd like to thank my fellow council members similarly for their long hours and hard work over this last year, you know, likewise, it's a sacrifice for us, you know, but it's a labor of love, you know, certainly, you know, we do it, and we wouldn't make the sacrifices that we make, you know, if we didn't feel passionately about what we do and the community that we serve. So, thank you very much for listening, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. We'll see you in 2013. We're adjourned.
Thank you.